And welcome, ladies and gentlemen. I call to order the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. Mr. Donald Crupp, our county administrator, will now call the roll.
Well, good morning, Commissioners, and it is a beautiful May, spring day indeed. So, joining us this morning is Mr. Stephen Madcor, representing county council, and also to my far right is Mary Rathke, our clerk of the board. I'll start with a roll. Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Sattis.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Chair Ludo. Here. Would you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? There is no comma after nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
As we typically try to do, we have citizens' communication first, and then we'll have several presentations. So, I'll call forward the county clerk, Sherri Hall, along with Mac Woods.
I'm back again for the last Thursday before Election Day, just to give you an update. Election Day is Tuesday, May 17th, which is five days from today. Ballots have to be in our office or in a drop box by 8:00 that night. Anything after that is too late. And you'll see on the screen behind you the list of drop boxes in the county, and that information is also available on page 352 of the voter's pamphlet. So be sure that you check it out, and after today, your ballot should be dropped in a drop box, not in the mail. By statute, today is the last day to mail out ballots, either from our office if you didn't get yours, or for you to send it back to us to make sure that it gets to us on You have a list. I gave you a printout of the election results as of yesterday, so you'll see where we're at, and we're at 20% turnout. That's pretty low. If you look at the bottom, on that same page on our website with results or returns, we have four primaries listed, and you'll see what the total turnout was with each of those primaries. The 2014 and 2010 were the governor race, and the 2012 and 2008 was the presidential. This election is both governor and presidential, so don't you think we should have higher turnout? We're hoping everyone gets their ballots back to us on time. Did you have any questions?
No, I think, you know, you've made it abundantly clear, and I don't know how better to get it across people than to continue to tell them that they should be mailing that ballot today, right?
Right. Yes, or putting it in a drop box. There's very convenient drop sites, depending on where you're at, and they're all open until 8:00 election night. The inside ones are open until 8:00 during the time before an election. If they're in a city hall or a library inside, they close when that building closes, but on election night, they're all open until 8:00.
All right. Commissioners, any questions? Thank you, Ms. Hall.
Okay. Thank you.
Appreciate the update. Thank you.
You don't have to run off.
I do.
She's peculiar who she sits by, but that's why we elected her. I'm Mac Woods, Clackamas County, Kembe. I am a veteran. Us veterans know how to vote, and we vote. Couldn't be a better time, because there's some people needs to be dethroned and get out of those seats, that their taxpayers are paying a lot of money while they waste it. It's time, the veterans are going to vote. I'm one of them, after over 20 years in the Navy, three trips to Vietnam. I call it trips, not tours, as politicians call it, because it's everything except a tour. Politicians don't know that, but yeah, it is election time. They all want to say what they're doing for the veterans. They get elected and do nothing for the veterans. A good example, any politician, including each and every one of you, much closer to walk across the patio out here over to the tax assessor's office and get the information on veterans. One of them was in here a few months ago, can't even use his arms, couldn't get a job, even mopping floors. His taxes went up higher than the $20,158 exempted off. He can't even get a job mopping floors. If you politicians can't get off of your dead bottom and do something for the veterans, then don't talk about them. Just take a, in fact, you need to resign. I hear all this talk of what you're doing for the veterans while you do nothing. Coach Schrader is a good example, when they put up that memorial last election for Tyrone Woods, my blood cousin, down here on the highway. Nothing but a ploy to try to get votes like they're doing something for the veterans. I'm a veteran, I've been there, done that. I need to say no more about it. But each and every one of the 36 counties in Oregon have the same rules regarding disabled veterans or surviving spouse property tax exemption. That exemption ain't even a drop in the bucket compared to what it was when it started in 1955, when veterans were allowed $10,000 off of the total tax amount that their property was assessed at. Most of them was between $7,000 in 1955, 60 years ago, between $7,000 and $8,000. So, a veteran rated 40% or more disabled were not paying $1 taxes, but the cotton picking politicians, that's a southern word, cotton picking, that's for people that don't know up from down, can't get a job doing anything except picking cotton. I have a classmate back here with me, was in my class in high school. She's concerned, we're talking about all these empty buses running around and TriMed. How can they even get enough money to pay for the field and the driver on them? I said, "Well," I don't know myself, "what do you suggest?" She said, "They're paid by the taxpayers. Why don't you audit TriMed?" I said, "Good idea, I'm done." Unless you have a question for me.
Well, just a statement, you have been bringing this rather consistently to us, and we have been...
John, they won't listen. Why?
I gotta finish, and we have been listening to that, so...
Why don't you do something about it?
I gotta be able to finish.
John, I've asked you to go with me over there, and you won't do it.
Huh?
So, don't interrupt me. Just get off your tail and go over there and let me show you.
Oh, come on, Mac. Let me finish, will you? Please.
Go ahead. I don't want to waste a lot of time, though. I hear a lot of...
Well...
You guys are not even respectful for Les Poole last week. You alone, the voters saw that.
Mac, Mac, after four to five minutes of being, not dissimilar to his speech, to yours, of being beat up, and I give three minutes, you're gonna have to let me finish, Mac. After, we give you three minutes, Sarah, you could continue on a little further, and you know I don't hammer people down for that, but let me finish, let me finish what I was gonna say. We listened to you, and we approached some legislators last session, but remember, it was a short session to get that changed. I agree, in $1955, $5, you could buy a great house for $20,000, which means that that veteran with that disability would not have to pay taxes, but that hasn't kept up. So, we fully intend, Mac, to introduce this in the full session this next time. So, you know, when people, if you do your math, you say $20,000 times, you know, times the tax rate about $25, that's $400 or $500 off your taxes, and sometimes a tax bill's $3,000 or $4,000, so we fully understand that. But again, some of us up here gave our pledge that we would continue with the legislature. We don't have anything to do with this tax forgiveness. That's a legislative act by the state. We will approach them about that idea that you have consistently brought before us.
You want me to respond to your comment?
Sure, Mac, go ahead.
I have heard this over and over and over, and I know how it works to get it back to what it was when it started in 1955, and they won't do it. They only mention veterans just to get sympathy votes, to make the voters think they're doing something for the veterans while they do nothing. I've seen it, I've been there. I mean, I don't sell the left side, Shrapnel, Vietnam's 1967. I don't get enough off of my taxes to even count. I know, I understand it, and I'm talking about the people that could do something about it and won't. That's the problem. The veterans are gonna vote this year. They're good people out there. They honor, they understand respect above all, and you too, but some of the things that you commissioners do, you need to read the rules that we, that speak, like when Les Poole spoke, you need to understand what Les, I mean, what respect is, and I certainly understand respect after over 20 years in the Navy. Thank you, Mr. Ludo.
Commissioner Sattis.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, Sher, that the Veterans Committee at the annual conference that I sat in on in Salem, there are actually some county commissioners that are veterans that are actually on the committee that are trying to help their fellow comrades, so I think they look at it far more passionately, and it's great to hear their perspective, Mac, and by the way, thank you for your service and all the veterans out there.
Thank you for the compliment. I was glad to serve. I was lucky I come back, but who, I don't know any of them that's politicians, that's an actual veteran. Introduce me to them, I'm available, you have my phone number.
Okay, I'll do that.
Thank you, Mr. Paul.
All right, and now we have Les Poole and Alice Richmond.
Yeah, Les, I need to give him the information on himself, and I'll be right back.
We'll wait for you, Alice.
Yeah, okay.
Les Poole, Gladstone. Alice is a real sweetheart, isn't she? I'm looking forward to hearing from her. I'll be brief today. As many of you know, I was here at the last meeting, and I said some things that I think are pretty easy to substantiate, and it refuted some things that were said by Commissioner Bernard in his closing comments at the end of the meeting on April 28th. And after I spoke last week, Commissioner Bernard, of course, said he'd check on his comments about the tree ordinance and get back to us, and that everything else he said was true, basically. I think that's the best way I can paraphrase it. Well, we need to bring an end to this, because this is an uncomfortable, unnecessary distraction, especially during an election cycle. I can't imagine why a candidate who's running for the chair seat would attack a citizen about the time the ballots went out, especially with untruths. These attacks have got to end, and with all due respect, I did not hammer Mr. Bernard last week. I did not disrespect anyone, and I have not. It's very clear that this needs to be resolved, and the easiest way to resolve that would be for Commissioner Bernard to show up next week with some clear proof, clear evidence that substantiates his claims. I'm not so worried about the personal attack on me as the public record being distorted. So, I would hope, and I would ask Commissioner Bernard next week to bring some proof of his claims made on the 28th, and if he can't do that for us, then please issue an apology to the citizens and myself for some of the conduct. This is not good, Jim, and I would expect you to bring, as I would. If I made these claims, and someone questioned them, and I'm a commissioner, you bet I'm gonna come back and resolve it, but I don't think that proof exists, and you can understand why I'm not voting for Commissioner Bernard, so I'll be here next week, and hopefully you'll bring that. Thank you, folks.
Commissioner Bernard?
Thank you.
Well, I just want to add that...
Sure.
You know, you often comment about us, and I commented about you. How that is an attack, I don't get it. I mean, you want us to respond...
Yes.
So, you responded, I responded. How's that an attack?
Great question, great question.
I just suggested that...
I'll go ahead, real quickly.
Wait, wait, I wasn't done. I was just saying, and I apologize, I was wrong about the tree ordinance. I know you've done a records research, and I did not, and you did not comment on the tree ordinance, but you did have an impact on where the light rail station ended? For sure. You were at those meetings.
Yes, of course.
And the reason, all I said is the reason that light rail didn't stop in Milwaukee is because we couldn't use that park. Instead, it had to go to Park Avenue. How is that an attack on you?
Well, very briefly, when you say things that aren't true, or when you wait until the end of a meeting, and then you make a comment, or two, or three, or four, that are innuendo, comments that started out with, "The light rail was originally gonna end at Cronberg Park," which is totally incorrect. "The light rail was gonna end in downtown Milwaukee next to your property, and the attempt to put it at Cronberg Park failed. It was never destined there, and after that blew up, as I said last week, we ended up with the potential of going to Park Avenue or stopping back next to your property." I'm not an affected property owner. I don't have anything to hide here, so if you're here next week, which I hope you are, I would like you to substantiate your claims. Also, when you, at the end of the meeting on the 28th, the last thing I will say is that on the 28th, and it's on the video, after you mentioned the tree ordinance, then you made a snarky comment about my rural land usability, or my capability, or something to that effect. Next February, when the legislature's in session, I invite the other four of you commissioners to go to Salem with me, and we'll work on some of those things. Thanks again. And now, it's Alice Richmond time.
Make sure it's done. Today, tomorrow is Friday the 13th, you're all gonna get it.
Make sure that microphone's close to you, we want to hear you.
Thank you. Clackamas Commissioners greeting. Why am I here? It came to my attention of on the politics played in disturbing, in dispersing, and it is disturbing to me that the Clackamas Tourism Department, how they share their funds. I am not in disagreement that Gladstone City was appropriated, nor any other cities, but my integrity calls me to retort upon the fact that CCC Tourism Bureau rates and classifies City of West Lynn inferior to Gladstone and other cities. Does they own themselves the sagacity to downgrade West Lynn with presumptuous pretenses? The need for me to come speak to you is another fact, which demonstrates the lack of attention and observance from either...
Mr. Trump.
Pardon me, from either Mr. Trump, CCC Administrator, or maybe you people. After all, he either is too busy and/or is aloof to how what one of his department functions on his watch, the processes of the department and of county affairs. They deny West Lynn City is fine with me, but it is the pretenses and the untelling of what it is propaganda that the West Lynn doesn't mean a damn thing, pardon me, God. So, previously, I have given you all evidenti, individually, my reports on my events. I respectfully rest my case. It is, like the previous people said, campaign, again, to vote, but unfortunately, Administrator, it is a higher staff. He personally is a very nice person, but maybe he's too, too, too busy to oversee the departments. That is not for me to enlarge on that subject. However, I will defend West Lynn and myself particularly. In here, I did not write telltale gapes of what comes back to me of just lately. I'm too much of a lady, and I know how I will punch it eventually, but I want to be aware of it, that West Lynn, in my opinion, in a statistic, is even larger than Gladstone, have more votes than West Lynn, than Gladstone. So, saying that, I used up my three minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alice.
Question, you can telephone me. You all had another...
We got you, remember. I wouldn't mention that you mentioned Mr. Trupp, and it's actually Mr. Crupp, but that's all right. This is Don Crupp. He is our county...
No, I voted for Trump, and I'm not scared nor ashamed to say, because he's got the guts to oversee things.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Crupp oversees a lot of departments, and those include the...
He's too busy. I said, too, too busy. He delegates somebody that is worthy to say equally, equally, instead of getting the whole pot everywhere else.
Mr. Crupp oversees a lot of departments, and evidently, the lack of funding for your fantastic event, which you do every year, thank you for doing that.
I'm telling you, I just tell people, we all go out after the Fourth of July, we all do, I mean, I'll give you the facts.
Okay.
The point is they disrespectfully...
I'm real proud I've never used this, ever. I mean, again, that decision to not fund evidently was done by the Tourism Development Council as part of...
That's what I said, Joe, you didn't listen to me.
Alice, come on, you're hurting my head here.
I'm hard on the job, nothing passes me, trust me. At 86, if I'm capable to oversee a lot of things, statewide even, he can do it, he gets paid, I don't even. Many of us volunteer, doesn't. Yes, I debated and I thought about it, and I reread his letter 75 times, or sorry, 77 times, but I liked your letter, I saved it. How's that?
Thank you, Alice.
And also said, the secretary, I don't know who she is.
Okay. Thank you. Well, that brings us on to something probably a little bit happier than all this. Mr. Crupp, we have several presentations. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and of course, May is Mental Health Awareness Month. I want to invite Mary Rumbaugh with our Health, Housing and Human Services Department up to give you that presentation, and I understand you have others to introduce as well, so...
I will actually hand the start of the presentation over to Nina Danielson, our Prevention Coordinator.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair Ludo, Commissioners, Administrator Crupp, and Clackamas residents. Thank you so much time, for, thank you for taking the time to hear from us today during Mental Health Awareness Month. My name is Nina Danielson, and I am the Health Promotion Coordinator with the Behavioral Health Division. I'm joined this morning by Mary Rumbaugh, Director of the Behavioral Health Division, and my esteemed colleague, Gally Murray, our Youth Suicide Prevention Coordinator. May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and a time to bring awareness to issues surrounding mental illness. Our mental health is part of our whole health package. Mental illness is more common than heart disease and cancer combined. Over the course of a lifetime, 50% of us will meet criteria for a diagnosable health condition, diagnosable mental health condition, just as we will most likely experience a physical health condition. In fact, half of all mental health disorders will begin by the age of 14 and 3/4 by the age of 24. Major depressive disorder is the leading cause of disability in the U.S. for ages 15 to 44. Sadly, stigma and the resulting discrimination that people and communities and experience lead us to manage this very common health condition differently. Mental health, mental illness is common, mental illness is treatable, we are resilient, we do get better, and we do indeed recover. So, you may have heard, something amazing is happening right here in this building. We are doing a better job, and we are here to tell you more specifically about the extraordinary steps we are taking right here in Clackamas County towards hope, healing, and recovery. We are intentionally learning how to show people that we care, whether it's simply checking in and asking, "Are you okay?", or perhaps more bravely, asking a very, very tough question, "Are you thinking of suicide?" This work takes heart. The people who work here, the people who lead here, and our bigger community of families connected to each of us are now getting trained to help. Since the launch of the Regional Training Initiative, Get Trained to Help has certified over 2,000 people across the metro region, far exceeding our expectations. These trainings give ordinary people critical first aid skills that stop stigma, connect people to help, and potentially save lives. In October of 2015, we launched our suicide prevention efforts with a youth suicide prevention forum. Over 150 passionate and dedicated community members attended, ready to engage in honest conversations about collaborating to prevent youth suicide in Clackamas County. Among those attending was Rich Swift, Director of Health, Housing and Human Services. Shortly after the forum, our team received an email outlining his commitment to suicide prevention and a further commitment to making it possible for all 586 H3S employees to be trained in mental health first aid. This leadership is unrivaled and makes us proud. We are making a difference. The quotes that you see up on this slide are quotes, they are voices of H3S employees who have taken the training. They are voices of hope in our community, and at this point, I'm actually gonna turn our presentation over to Gally Murray, our Youth Suicide Prevention Coordinator.
Thank you, Nina, Chair Ludo, Commissioners, for having us here this morning. I'm gonna continue the conversation that Nina started. We are doing great work here, but we still have a lot of work ahead of us. I want to point out the slide, Commissioners and Chair, you have this in front of you, I believe, and the audience can see this on the slide ahead, that over a 30-year period, issues like stroke, HIV/AIDS, heart disease, have all dropped drastically, those rates, and they haven't dropped drastically due to coincidence or luck. It's been a very intentional effort on the part of healthcare organizations, agencies, very intentional to get these rates to drop, yet at the same time, our rate of suicide, our national rate of suicide, has continued to increase. So again, putting this in context, HIV/AIDS, stroke, heart disease, have all decreased, but yet suicide continues to go up. We can do a better job. What do we know about suicide? What are the facts? We know that in Oregon, one person dies every 11 hours by suicide. We know that in Oregon, suicide is the leading killer of our young veterans. We know that in Clackamas County, in our county alone, we lose 52 people a year to suicide. Five of those are our youth, ages 10 to 24. We know that more than half of the people that die by suicide in our county use a gun, which is consistent with the national data that 52% of people who die by suicide nationally use a gun. We know that the tri-county area, Washington, Clackamas, Multnomah, on average loses four people a week to suicide. Four people a week. We know that people thinking about suicide don't actually want to die. What they want is the pain to stop. They want the suffering to stop. What we know is that in the month before people died by suicide, half of them, half of them saw a primary care provider, a general practitioner, half of them. 30% of them saw a mental health professional. This is where we can do better. We know that the risk of suicide is highest the first 30 days following discharge from an emergency department or an acute psychiatric unit. This is also where we can do better. It's time for us to look at suicide, safer care, differently. It's time to do it better. Like I mentioned before on the slide about heart disease and stroke and HIV/AIDS, all of those rates have decreased with intention... of those rates have decreased with intentionality. In the U.S., we have national suicide prevention lifelines, we have hotlines, every single state has a suicide prevention program, there's educational programs and screening programs, yet over the last decade, our rate isn't staying the same, it's not decreasing, it's going up. In 2003, to give you the numbers, the rate was ten point eight deaths per a hundred thousand people, and in 2013, it was twelve point six. We are going up with no sign of going down. It's time for us to do it differently. Clackamas County has agreed to do it differently. We have agreed to do it differently and we've agreed to be more intentional. And we have agreed that zero deaths to suicide is the only acceptable number. And attempting to reduce suicides for people in our care in Clackamas County to zero may seem completely scary or downright impossible. But I guess I would ask, a rhetorical ask, of what number really is acceptable, right? We lose fifty-two people a year. Like, what number is acceptable? Ten, five? Zero is the only acceptable number that we can aim for. And a quote that really has resonated with me, and I know you can read it, but I want to read it out loud, "It's critically important to design for zero even when it may not be theoretically possible." It's aiming, it's about purposely aiming for a higher level of performance. And that's from the President and CEO of the Sunai, the Cedar Sunai Medical Center. We've agreed to do it differently in Clackamas County, we've agreed to be more intentional. And part of that work is to take the time and do something really simple and ask the question. Nina alluded to this before. This is a simple gesture of starting a conversation, and it's making extraordinary strides towards creating a culture of hope, healing and recovery, and it saves people's lives. So on that note, I'm going to hand the presentation back over to Nina. Thank you.
So this coming Sunday, on May fifteenth, we are joining our community every Sunday in May Thousands Walk and the annual NAMI Northwest Walk to show their support of mental health awareness and recovery from mental illness. This year, Health, Housing and Human Services will be walking together as a team with all proceeds going to our local NAMI Clackamas. NAMI Clackamas has provided hope for individuals and families facing mental illness for over thirty years, and I'm proud to say that I know Martha Schrader is already signed up for our team. Thank you so much. And to close our presentation, we have some special words, and Mary Rumbaugh is going to be...
Let me have Commissioner Smith say something first.
Absolutely.
Oh, thank you for that. Your presentation does not go unnoticed. It's, this issue is something that's very near and dear to my heart for family members, and the suicide is just a shame, and I've personally experienced that as well. I've been talking with our board members the last several weeks or months, I can't keep track of the time, but, you know, our budget is flat this year, and going forward, looking at what we can do, you know, I asked them if we could do, as a board, something about the stigma relating to mental illness. If we could just start with that little project at our level and go forward and assist you in identifying the stigma, maybe with PSAs or something. I would like to discuss this more in an upcoming policy session, probably this summer is before the first time we can get to it, because I do think it is a really big deal. You know, we have so many things coming at us all in life, including the Commissioners here. If we could just kind of say, you know what, so what, you're depressed, so what, you have anxiety, that's okay. And people are still fearful of admitting it, that their peers will think badly of them, that they will lose their job or maybe not get a job, when, like you say, depression is one of the most treatable things out there, and anxiety as well, and not just because of drugs, but because of new therapies that have been used and self-help, self-awareness. So I'm real optimistic on what we can do, so maybe we all can work together and go forward at a higher level on this soon.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. That means a lot to all of us, and I think just you saying that publicly, you're doing the work right there. And even if that's all you did, which I'm hearing that's far from what you're planning to do, you know, creating space to have these conversations is exactly the work that we, we all in this room, not just me or our Behavioral Health Division, have ahead of us, and it's conversations like this one that move those conversations forward.
You know, we have a lot of stories in the news, for instance, about homelessness, and somebody said, came before us, you know, seventy percent of homelessness in America is from mental illness. I don't know if it is or not, I don't know where that stat came from, but if that's the case, holy cow, you know, there's a lot we can do. And, you know, Clackamas County has some really, really good programs to deal with some of these things, but, you know, we're limited. You know, we can't take every person, but if we can take a person and get them on the road to treating their disease and just showing them, and we have a lot of challenges ahead of us on homelessness and housing, affordable housing, so maybe if we can put our heads together.
We would love that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith.
You know, mental illness has directly affected my life. My mother had extreme problems, to the point where, you know, my two siblings became heroin addicts, and my sister, who I loved dearly, it was only eleven months difference between us, took that gun and ended it. A great loss for me, a personal loss, tragic. But, you know, my mother constantly threatened suicide, and instead she made those around her miserable, to the extent that one of them did commit suicide. So untreated mental illness can lead to a lot of things, including suicide. Let's not forget the direct effect it has on everybody who loves that person unconditionally, and it does affect their lives as well down the line. Commissioner Schrader.
Thank you. I'm really looking forward to doing the walk with you folks. I've been a NAMI supporter for years and been also very aware of the work that you've done with our Sheriff's Office, which has been significant, because a lot of times it's our boots-on-the-ground folks, our public safety folks, who are having to deal with behaviors and things that are harmful to a person or to other people. And so part of that, I know that we have embedded mental health workers in the Sheriff's Department, so they're trying not to get them into jail, they're trying to actually find a space to put them. And as a county, my colleagues and I, we did support, I think it's the Unity Center, where there are mental health beds for people. It is a regional, it's a regional thing, and, you know, hopefully, at least it gives us more space when people need that crisis intervention. And I also wanted to give a shout-out to Lines for Life, because I have toured their facility, and I know the work that they do. Their mission is to prevent substance abuse and suicide, and their number is eight hundred two seven three eight two five five. And they not, they not only work, again, with the general population, but they specifically, I believe they're going to be having an event in order to garner money because they are seeing an increase in veteran suicides, and that is another level of concern. And even right now in my own life, I'm dealing with a friend who has had a mental addiction and breakdown and is in very serious trouble because of that, extremely serious trouble. So I would like to be able to take that training, because part of my feeling is, if I had recognized, I got the feeling something wasn't right and things weren't going the way they were supposed to be, but I didn't know, and here I'm in a system, and had I communicated better and well, we could, I could have helped this person get to rehab, get them to where they needed to be, and somehow stopped the behavior. And right now, I'm extremely worried, I don't know where this person is, I think he's on the run, and it's very worrisome to not know. I blame myself because I should have recognized it sooner, I should have seen it, and I could have intervened in a way that would have been more helpful. So I'm so glad you're out there, and if you would please let me know when the training is, I would like to take it, because we want...
We absolutely let you know when the training is.
We took that mental health training...
You did take it?
Yeah, with Cindy Becker, the department head, when she was here, and I'm glad to hear that all the employees in that division or department want to do it, because it really is a nightmare.
Commissioner Bernard?
Yeah, it's, it's not dissimilar to that, you know, now we're going to ask our employees to all take driver's training.
No.
You know, we have various organizations like Clackamas Women's Services that does the camp hope, and really, hope is so important to, you know, turning people around. I've always said, you know, our best investment is probably conception till, you know, five, six years old, and that's where we can really change people's lives and give them hope. Our Family Justice Center, you know, those kids come in, having lived in a situation that I'm sure damages their mental health, and they probably think nobody cares, and what we do is try to provide some hope for a future. You know, years ago, we closed our mental health facilities, put them in a bus and took them downtown, and that's criminal, as far as I'm concerned. I lived in Villebois, which was the Damish Hospital grounds, and there are a number of facilities around there. By law, they had to have a certain percentage of mental health facilities. I used to go to pizza dinners with some of those folks, but they're incorporating them in the community. The other thing is support. Without telling you too much, lots of times, mental health doesn't come out, mental health issues don't come out till there's a trauma, like a friend of our, a friend of ours was hit by a car and thrown quite a distance, not injured that much, but that very day, mental health problems started to come out. And so when people get out of an emergency room, which he did, you know, no one really thought about his mental health, and that's really what, you know, the bruises and stuff were only part of the injury. And so having support in small businesses, you know, when somebody has a mental health problem, you don't just get rid of them. You have to be there to support who they are, and oftentimes, that's a little different. Maybe they don't do it like you would or something, but you have to give some flexibility in how they do their job. And I can tell you for a fact that the person that I know wouldn't be here today if all those other folks weren't there to support him after that accident. So, yeah, and the Clackamas County's done so much more. We do have some mental health beds in the jail that we really need to get open, but, you know, we have mental health people available with our Sheriff's Department. Instead of taking to a jail, often we'll take them to a mental health facility, and we're recognizing that investment. I would love to take that training, too. John and I, by the way, took a child abuse training, how to recognize child abuse fairly recently, which was just barely left the room with any tears left in mind. It was just amazing, and all we can do to learn, to identify those problems, you're right, we can get it to zero. But I can also tell you that, how many times have you heard a parent say, "I had no idea, I never noticed the problem," and it occurs. So I don't know how. It'll be tough.
Well, we're going to do it all together, you know, and just conversations like you've all shared today is, this is how we move the conversation forward, and we do it together.
Commissioner Savas?
Well, this is a great dialogue. I have a question and a comment. Question is, you had that one graph with the demographic showing in yellow there that the mental health thing is flat, or, as you mentioned, increasing. Is that demographic change itself of those in that category?
That's a good question. I don't know, I don't know the definitive answer to that.
Okay. Yeah, my comment is, I guess, because I think unfortunately, we all know someone who probably took their own life, and I've known several since I was a kid, and my question is really about what are some easy things to spot to identify people that might be stressed? I know that sometimes maybe some things are obvious, but maybe not necessarily that someone would take their life. You might see that people are in stress and whatnot, and, but some of the, some of those signs or signals would be helpful, but how to correlate that into someone taking their life as opposed to being in some kind of a distraught about whatever it may be, I don't know. I can't separate that. Would people actually go to take their life, other than they might echo something, say something, be very concerned? I know that on a recent ride along with the Sheriff's Department, at the end of his shift, I said, "So what is it that the county Commissioners or the county can do to help you guys? What tools do you need?" And the response is very interesting, he says, "We need a place to take some of the people that are mental stressed and take them to get help." And that was number one tool coming from, that he responded to. So that's how important and how big of an issue this is. So, but if there's a place to go or some material to find for people to be, help identify some of those things, but how you correlate that into suicides is a whole different, a whole different thing, right?
Absolutely. And you've posed some fantastic questions, and I guess to answer a few of them, probably the most important, there is a place for folks to go in Clackamas County that is our urgent walk-in clinic, and it's called Centerstone. It's located on Eighty-Second Avenue, and that's one-one-two-one, one-one-two-one-one, southeast Eighty-Second Avenue. We operate the crisis line out of that building, and they are open seven days a week, holidays, Christmas, you name it. And that is a place that people of our community who are experiencing a mental health emergency can walk in. And it also is a place that law enforcement can take people who are struggling to Centerstone, and they can get immediate support from a qualified mental health professional. So, you know, we are very fortunate in this county that we have the support from you all to have that building and funding to have that building. It's a lovely resource that not many counties can say that they have. We have a county crisis line, and that is, the number is five oh three six five five eight five eight five, similar to the Lines for Life that Commissioner Schrader mentioned, but local. And I think to answer your question, a brief answer to your question, Commissioner Savas, about kind of what to look for, I think, you know, what we should know is that most people do give some type of sign or symptom, some type of indicator that they are struggling and that they are at risk, most people, but not all people. It's hard to predict people's behaviors. Sometimes people die by suicide and there was no sign or symptom at all. Most people do indicate that they are struggling, and it looks different for different folks. But I guess the catch-all answer to that is really, if there's a change in functioning, if there's a change, if there's a difference in how someone's behaving or interacting, you know, if you've noticed that someone who's an extrovert has suddenly, you know, decided not to be social, if you notice that someone likes to play sports and they don't want to go to practice anymore, if you notice someone who has historically not ever slept and had insomnia starts being a good sleeper. And there's lots of things. But I guess the main thing is if you've noticed a difference, that's when the question, like, "Hey, are you okay? I'm concerned about you, you seem a little off. Anything I can do?" You don't need to be a mental health professional to ask that question, and that's our big push, is that you don't have to be a mental health professional to make a difference.
What came to light at our last budget process a year ago now to today was that, you know, our Centerstone is only open during business hours typically.
Correct.
And this deputy that I was with that evening, his graveyard shift, right?
Ah, yes.
So of course, his perspective, the graveyard shift, Centerstone's not open...
Of course.
...during his shift. So that was something that we actually kind of discussed with that Multnomah County facility, which its name was...
I think it was Unity?
With Unity, yeah, yeah.
So hopefully, that'll be some kind of an avenue that we can, at least at the late hours, that we, people have that service available to use.
Absolutely.
So it's a great facility, was there, we cut the ribbon on that.
Yeah, we think it's pretty great, yeah.
Now, sir, for some presentation?
Thank you, thank you.
Commissioners are like this sometimes.
Thank you, Chair Ludo, and thank you, Commissioners. And I would just like to say, Commissioner Schrader, what you were talking about, sort of that feeling, Nina likes to call that your spidey sense, like something you just could sort of tell something wasn't right. So our training will help you sort of identify that and figure out how to ask those questions. But I get to finish. My name's Mary Rumbaugh, Director of Behavioral Health here, and I'm really excited to really end our presentation, really not focusing on us here who have presented, but really about the extraordinary, ordinary heroes who are doing this amazing work every single day. The work that they do is spreading the message of hope and recovery and reducing stigma. And perhaps, and many of you have spoken about this, that you know of ordinary heroes in your own life who have walked alongside you when maybe you have struggled or you've been that person for them. So in honor of Mental Health Awareness Month... Mental Health Awareness Month, our division would like to recognize and celebrate seven unique individuals that we believe have super hearts. We thank them for their dedication, commitment, and passion to hope, healing, and recovery. And as I pronounce, as I announce you, if you could actually just stand, and then I'll have a final closing statement, and then we'll be able to actually finish up and do some pictures and awards at the end. So first and foremost, I'd like to actually recognize Rich Swift, the Director of Health Housing and Human Services, and one of our biggest champions of the work we're doing. Michelle Vinker, Executive Director of NAMI Clackamas. Susie Shank, a mental health first aid trainer, as well as one of our Centerstone therapists. Karen Carlin, mental health first aid trainer, also a Centerstone therapist. Adam Stell, mental health first aid trainer with Trillium Family Services. Cody Welty, Clackamas County Youth and Advocate, and somebody dear to our hearts, and want to thank his parents for also being here today. And Sheila Hamilton, who could not be here today, but she has been a wonderful partner to us. She's a kink radio host and an author, and has come and spoken to us about her own personal experience of losing her husband by death, by suicide. So, in closing today, we ask that you join in our cause for spreading the word of hope. Please take a training. Tell someone to take a training. Tell more employees to take trainings. Call a friend and let them know you are there for them. This work will take all of us. Thank you for having us today.
All the people standing, could you come forward? We're gonna have a photo op right up here. I have this on, come on forward. I have this comment as my signature, both my personal and my business email, and I love it, by Leo Biscaglia, and it really is at the forefront of this. Too often, we underestimate the power of a touch, a smile, a kind word, a listening ear, or an honest compliment, or the smallest act of caring, all of which have the potential to turn a life around. And that's what you're talking about, is touching people, getting personal. It's all about relationships and knowing them better, is it not? Here we go, pictures.
I don't need a flash with this new camera. My advisor's telling me.
And it looks pretty good, so keep smiling.
Thank you.
Well, I'll give you congratulations to all of the recipients and people who showed up. Thank you for showing up today and supporting us. And now, we have something that's really exciting as well. Mr. Krupp is going to give, like he does every year, his Budget 101 Presentation, because it's that time of year, is it not?
Indeed, it is. It is springtime. And in the spring, a young county administrator's heart and thoughts turn to budget.
Where's that guy?
So, yeah, I have a short presentation for you in anticipation of budget deliberations, which will begin on the very last week of May. Last year, when I gave this presentation, you asked me if I would include this particular slide in my presentation for this year. And this is actually a presentation of state and county shared services that's produced by the Association of Oregon Counties. And the purpose of this chart is to describe the intimate and integrated relationship between county government and state government in the delivery of services that benefit our citizens in Clackamas County and for the state, citizens throughout the state of Oregon. And the main thing to take away from this particular chart is that the state and the county work together to provide a continuum of services to our citizens. There are very specific state-provided services that our citizens benefit from, and there are shared services that include state and county resources together for the delivery of services. And then finally, there are those things that we do that are funded wholly and solely at the local level. So, for example, under the Public Safety column here, the state police and the state prison is a state-provided service and wholly funded by the state of Oregon. But in the red box there, when we take a look at the operation of the trial courts and community corrections, those are the kinds of functions that we blend together, state funds and resources with locally derived county funds and revenues in order to serve our citizens. And then finally, there are those specific kinds of services that are provided and supported solely by local resources, such as our property tax, and of course, operations like the Sheriff's Patrol and the county jail are the kind of things that are supported by local funding sources. In some ways, when you look at this chart, you get the feeling a little bit schizophrenic because there's so much interplay and interconnection between how the delivery systems in health and human services, public safety, natural resources and recreation, transportation, land use and economic development, as well as other community services. There's a great deal of interplay between what it is the state does and the county does, and what we do together to benefit our citizens. So, I usually start talking about budget by displaying a pie chart. And this chart will show you the entire county budget for this current fiscal year. And it is about 969 million. About 74% of it, though, includes those things that we refer to as general government or general county operations. And included in that 74% are probably the two largest functions in county government, which would include the county sheriff's operations, as well as our Health Housing and Human Services Department. And you just had an opportunity to hear in depth about one of the many things our Health Housing and Human Services Department does, in this case, in the case of mental health services to county citizens. I want to share with you, though, an interesting little tidbit of information, because when you saw this chart during budget deliberations last year, that figure up there said $933 million. But during the course of the year, we receive additional funds and resources in a variety of ways, either from state government or the federal government. And we always true up the county budget along the way as we do that. The same thing will be true with the budget that we deliberate on here in the coming weeks. But what I can tell you is that you will see a draft proposed budget that begins at about $973 million, 700 million of which represents that general government area of county government. And of course, this table here shows you the array of county departments and offices by dollar amount, again, Health Housing and Human Services, which has one of the largest workforces in the county at about almost $140 million. Most of that involves not general fund dollars, but funds that come from other sources, state and federal sources, as well as, in some cases, fees and local revenues. Then, the county sheriffs, including community corrections, while there is some state funding and a little bit of federal funding in the sheriff's budget, most of the sheriff is budgeted from the county's general fund, as well as a special option levy and a special district levy for enhanced law enforcement. And then you keep going down the list with transportation and development, business and community services, and others. We keep going down the list, and you see then the total, the total county general government operations is estimated at about $712 million total at this point. Now, when we talk about the general fund, the general fund is that part of your budget that is principally derived from the property tax. And this is the funding source that the Board of County Commissioners has the most discretion in terms of how you allocate these funds to county services. About 94% of the general fund is supported by property taxes from the county. And when you take a look at how the general fund is used, you'll see that the primary use of general fund dollars, 64%, is to public safety. Principally, that involves county sheriff and jail operations, some community corrections operations. In the coming budget, that you will see the county general fund represents about $160 million of the county budget. The process of developing and deliberating on and adopting the budget is kind of like painting the Golden Gate Bridge. Just as soon as you finish one end, you got to go back around to the other end and start over again and keep going. But we actually begin our budget development process in earnest in January. And that's when we begin to develop the revenue estimates. We take a look at what internal service department costs are going to be. We take a look at what our estimated personnel costs may be. And then we begin in February, working with the various departments, putting on budget workshops, providing to the various departments and offices the guidelines and the protocols and the materials they need to develop their individual department budgets. Then in March and April, I meet with virtually every one of our county offices and departments, some 21 different departments and offices, to review with department staff and to ask questions and provide direction to those departments as they are working on preparing what would be their final budget proposals. We are just about to publish the fruits of all that labor. And as soon as we do, it will be posted on the web and made available to the public, just as soon as you also get the materials yourselves to begin reading. And then in the last week in May, beginning on May the 31st, our Clackamas County Budget Committee begins to hold public meetings. Now, I say budget committee, it's actually committees, because we have some 10 different budget committees, each of which includes all five of you, but also includes some five additional citizens on each. It's a very interactive process, because we have as many as 50 citizens participating in the budget review and deliberation process when we go through the county budget. And part of that review involves an examination of eight service districts that the county is responsible for, which have very specific responsibilities. Each and every one of those has its own individual budget committee. We do have a public hearing now scheduled before the budget committee to take public testimony on June the 2nd at 5:30 PM. And then we are scheduled for the Board of County Commissioners to conduct public hearings and act on the budget on June the 30th. So we are completed just before the start of the new fiscal year. As we then move into the ensuing year, of course, we'll continue to do ongoing monitoring and fine-tuning of the budget through the year. And on a quarterly basis, we meet with budget committee members of your general government budget. Now, for folks who are interested in reviewing these materials, they are online. And our county budget documents can be found at clackamas.us backslash or forward slash budget. And our comprehensive annual financial reports, which are kind of done on the tail end of each fiscal year, can be found at clackamas.us/finance. I would encourage anyone who's interested to attend a budget meeting or hearing. And the schedule is also posted online for folks, so they can pick and choose which ones they're interested in attending. And of course, we're always interested in encouraging anyone who may have an appetite for numbers and services to express their interest for participating on a county budget committee. We have a number of them that are always frequently recruiting for members to fill. And so these are a sample of those that we are in the process of making sure that we've got a full committee membership for, in anticipation of budget deliberations. Would encourage folks to do that. Now, what you will see this year with the draft budget that is presented to you by your budget officer is a series of materials that will be different depending on the status of different departments in their work on performance Clackamas. So, for example, last year, three of your departments put together budgets in a format to show how we are budgeting for results. We will have a year's worth of experience with those. And so you get a first chance opportunity to see how that measurement of results and how that ties to the decisions you make on budget is intended to work. We'll also have other departments that are just beginning that process of converting their budgets to that format, as well as those that are in the process of completing their strategic business plans that will make those budget modifications in ensuing years. I also just kind of want to make a, kind of a quick description about how this process is intended to work, because you have to go to Chapter 294 of the Oregon Revised Statutes. And beginning at, I think, Section 305 through, I think it's 585, is the statutory framework for which county governments and city governments conduct their budget deliberations. And those particular sections in the state RCWs, what they call out for is for the jurisdictions to identify a single individual to serve as your budget officer, you've done that in the county code, and appointed your county administrator as your budget officer. You've also appointed your county administrator to serve as the district administrator and budget officer for all of your service districts. And the statutes at all make very, very clear that you cannot expend money unless you follow the prescribed procedure that is in state law, which calls for the budget committee to meet, to conduct a hearing, to deliberate on the proposal as it's presented by your budget officer. The budget committee, as a convened budget committee, has the authority to ask for additional information that they find to be necessary in order to serve their deliberations. And then the budget committee has the authority to either approve the budget as it's presented or to make revisions and approve a revised budget. That then gets submitted to you, serving as the Board of County Commissioners, for the general government part of your budget, and then you, serving as the Board of Directors for the various service districts, for that part of your budget. So, that's how the process works. I'm looking forward to getting into it this year. We have a great team of staff that helped to pull all this together for you. And the departments and offices have really done yeoman's work in making sure we're staying on schedule, and we make sure you get the good information that you need.
Mr. Savas.
Well, I know we had a little bit of a discussion about that on Tuesday, at least as far as, which you referenced, as far as information requests and so forth. And I've been part of public budgeting since 1998, when I sat on my first budget committee, and been on budget committees ever since. And, you know, a lot of learned lessons... And, you know, a lot of learned lessons, but I will say, number one, that the Budget Committee makeup that we had, and when I first came on here in 2011, we had some very talented people. And those folks that are no longer members of the Budget Committee had, you know, they were, had expertise, actually, in budgeting and financial management. And I know that years of their questions are not that different than the current Budget Committee members' questions as well. And it would seem that with that level of expertise we had and the level of expertise we have currently and the backgrounds of those folks, that they're all relatively asking similar kinds of questions. And it seems to me that, you know, which is part of the public process, it seems to me that we ought to be, if we haven't asked ourselves those questions, then I guess maybe perhaps why? And I'm not talking about any specific area, per se, but it seems to me we ought to be accommodating that. I've always been one for, I feel extremely passionately and strongly about transparency and process. And budget is that time of year where really you set the stage for that rest of the year on how you prioritize or meet the priorities of what we perceive as important to our citizens, but also what our surveys and what's important to us and what we feel are important. So, I was, I really think that I've gone out of my way in the past, when in my roles of chair in my previous organizations, to go out of the way to satisfy those requests. And I hope we can do that this year and do it in a timely manner. But what I really wanted to say relative to what we talked about on, what you shared today, Dawn, and that is that, yeah, we do prepare the budget, we introduce the budget, and you're beginning to doing that, I guess it's Friday, you'll be introducing the budget document this Friday. But the continuum, those people are elected for a three-year term, and the continuum of their work, they're going to have questions before the budget, while the budget, existing budget's in play, and there is a continuum of work and curiosity and questions that they have. And I think we just can't look at it to say that their questions today necessarily line up with the budget we're facing or the budget that we're currently, period that we're currently in. And I think it's really important that we look at the continuum of their role, that it's not just, you know, this period of dates between May X and June X, you know, within that two-week time block that their work is done. It's a continuum of work. And I would, I would hope that we could do our best to answer those questions because it's difficult for me to sit here for five years and hear the same questions, past and present members. And I think we ought to recognize what people are asking for and do our best to be transparent.
Commissioner Bernard.
Well, I think one of the comments you made is that we certainly want to be open and clear to the community, to give them the opportunity to look at and comment on the budget, which we have always done. Attendance has always been poor. But, you know, I think last year, some folks came and we did something about their request. So, but the statute is fairly clear. I was actually talking to one of our Budget Committee members yesterday, and the only thing I wasn't quite sure of is that you actually, statute says you don't receive the budget document till you guys all sit down as a board. And so what you're doing, let's say this Friday, is beyond that. And so that in itself says something. It, and, you know, the city of Milwaukee, I've had a lot of budget experience too, and Mike Swanson, the city manager at the time, was an absolutely excellent budget officer and are probably, I got there at a very tough time too because we discovered that the city manager had borrowed money from the water department and hadn't, five years to pay it back, and it was the fourth year and hadn't paid it back. And so we had to take that out of the budget. And that kind of thing doesn't happen here. It's very clear, very obvious. I am concerned that we only have a million dollars to spend, and I'm not actually positive, that's the rumor. And we have some very important projects that we need to fund, and a five-million-dollar, five-plus-million-dollar request of other projects. But I just think that we're very transparent, and I think you do a good job and actually have made the budget fun. I could also say that budgets change every time you get a new commissioner who wants different stuff. I mean, I've seen budgets go from here to here to here to here, it's like a yo-yo. And like, you know, I happen to believe that we have some very experienced, trusted employees who have the much more knowledge than we're ever going to have, that I have, you have to trust, are doing their best work. So, I want to, I look forward to having an opportunity to review the budget in plenty of time before we actually sit down to talk about the budget because I'm going to be looking for how we can get a couple hundred thousand here or there to maybe open some jail beds or help with mental health, opening those mental health beds is pretty important to me too. But man, there's a lot of people who need a lot of things. Thank you.
All right. We are down to where the consent agenda is before us. I'll ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Okay, the consent agenda. Under Health, Housing and Human Services, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Gladstone for Addy Street improvements in northwest Gladstone. Under Department of Transportation and Development, approval of amendment number two to intergovernmental agreement two-seven-four-seven-two with Oregon Department of Transportation for the Pudding River Whiskey Hill Road Bridge Project. Under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. Under Business and Community Services, a board order approving the statutory quick claim deed from the City of West Lynn and a statutory quick claim deed to the City of West Lynn. Under our Technology Services, approval to enter into a contract with Robinson Broe Construction, Inc. for the installation of new fiber optic cable. North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, approval of a resolution for transfer of appropriations for North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District for fiscal year 2015, 2016. The Development Agency, approval of amendment number one to the contract with Harper Huff Peterson Regellis, Inc. for consulting services for engineering, design and construction plans for the Addy Street realignment project. And Water Environment Services, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County Service District Number One, Clackamas River Water Providers for the Clackamas River Watershed Activities. And that concludes today's consent agenda.
All right, commissioners, if you want to remove any of these items or need more explanation, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Schrader. Further discussion? All right, Mary.
Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Chair Ledlow.
Aye, passes five-zero. And now, once again, the stage is given to you, Mr. Trup.
Crup.
Crup.
Crup. Or Crump, or whatever. So, I've been called worse, so.
Yeah, me too, lately.
By the way, I, just to correct for the record, and maybe I'll try to catch up with Alice when I can, but the decision about the allocation of the funds for those community projects, that allocation decision is reserved for the Tourism Development Council. They've got the program design, they determine how those funds are distributed among the municipalities, and then the municipalities are the ones that make the decisions as to what projects actually get funded within their respective cities. So, and so they each have a separate application process, and Alice would have applied to the City of West Lynn to have her project funded. I don't know the disposition of that particular request on her part in the City of West Lynn, but that's kind of how the process works. But I have some good news. Speaking about budget, I just want to congratulate our North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District and our Water Environment Services Department for being recognized for excellence in financial reporting. Both NCPRD and two of our wastewater service districts, that includes the Tri-City Service District and the Clackamas County Service District Number One, received the accolade from the Government Finance Officers Association, and this is really the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting in the country. So, really good job on part of NCPRD and our West staff for accomplishing that. Then I also should share with you that our librarians in Clackamas County are active with raising food for people who need it. So, our thirteen libraries in Clackamas County, which are known as Link, conducted their annual Food for Fines drive, and they collected more than, well, more than eleven thousand five hundred pounds of food for local food banks. And of course, each donation of non-perishable nutritious food waived a dollar in overdue fines. So, it's a great trade-off, I think, on the part of our librarians in the community. And then lastly, our very dedicated staff with our Disaster Management Department, and they were formerly known as the Emergency Management Department, but they're changing their name as part of their performance management efforts. They are preparing our residents for potential disasters, and I'm pleased to report that the department is taking steps to remove barriers for our Spanish language population. This summer, disaster management plans to launch a Spanish language Facebook page that will provide residents with information about how to minimize the impact of natural and human-caused incidents. And this is really a first for Clackamas County, and hopefully it's a sign of more to come. So, I'll let you know when the page comes up, and that's my report.
Thank you. Now, it's time for commissioners' communication. We'll start with Commissioner Schrader.
Well, I wanted to thank you, colleagues, for last week holding down the fort. I was at the Public Utility Commission Work Group meeting where we are looking at underserved areas, rural areas, and how we can get natural gas to those communities. And of course, our interest in this as a commission is that, for example, Estacada has been mentioned numerous times at the meeting. It is one of our rural communities that if they had natural gas, their employment land would be much more marketable. So, it was a very interesting discussion because you could see PGE was there, you had the Northwest Natural Gas folks were there, you had the commercial users representative there, you had the folks who work with the ratepayers, who make sure they're ratepayers. And it was a very interesting discussion about what the scope would be of the Public Utility Commission in actually coming up with policies or, as we talked about, incentives to get natural gas out to rural communities. And it's pretty fascinating, so when we finally get through with it, I'm going to come back and report to all of you and see if there is even any possibility that we might come up with a model of looking at additional infrastructure out in our rural communities, not just transportation, water and sewer, but much-needed natural gas infrastructure. So, good meeting. One of the other things I wanted to talk about was we were all at the Children's Centers' Champions for Children's Luncheon the other day, and I have a quick story. I parked my car and I got into one of the golf carts and was talking to the man who was driving it. He was an employee engineer of Warren Industries, he was also an Air Force veteran, and he told me that he was having difficulty with the VA getting his benefits straightened out. It's taken him five years to do so. And he complimented our Heather from our, so kudos to Heather, who's one of our veteran service officers, for helping him get that material in electronically. The VA had lost his material, absolutely. After five years, they couldn't find it, and they told him he had ten days to get the material in or, you know, he wouldn't, he wouldn't have anything. So, she helped with that. We also put him in touch with Congressman Schrader's office because he has someone specifically who works with veteran issues, and they jump on this kind of an issue to help him through it. So, he was, so, I not only, I think, I'd like to thank, I helped with the Children's Center yesterday in supporting them in their mission and work, but in passing, that was a very nice, it was a very nice thing to happen. It was all serendipitous. I didn't expect it to happen, but I kind of feel as if our county really does go out of its way to help veterans. And to that, I actually, I'm going to switch this up, Mary, a little bit. So, I think I am going to do the Veterans Announcement first. Okay, so, we are going to be signing a Clackamas County Veterans Community Covenant on May sixteenth. We've partnered with Clackamas Community College to support their fiftieth anniversary celebration, and they're going to be one of the signatories of the covenant along with our city's mayors, Senator Allen Olson, Representative Julie Parrish, members of Oregon's military, and my dear friend, who is a Marine, and I guess Jarhead is what they call him, Cameron Smith, who is the Director of Oregon Department of Veterans Affairs. And this is a renewal of a pledge we made back in 2009 to our veterans and our families to not only recognize their sacrifice and service, but a promise for all of us to partner together to support and advocate for veterans, to connect them with the resources they need. It will be held at Gregory Forum on the college campus on Monday, May sixteenth, at two PM, and colleagues, I hope you're all there. There will be a reception following the signing, and veterans and all their families are welcome to come to that. So, we'd like to get that out there. One of the things I wanted to mention about this as well that we have, thanks to Commissioner Bernard, we have a Veterans Committee that he started when he first started his tenure here as a commissioner. They're, hopefully, are part of this, but what they're doing with their covenant to honor this document is they are actually coming up with a year-long work plan with tangible outcomes, kind of like managing for results. That's kind of what we're trying to get our committee to do. Most of the members are veterans and have been involved with veteran services for years, and I think one of the initial things that there's a lot of energy around, and I will credit Commissioner Smith for this as well, and that is homelessness and working on the homelessness issue with veterans and housing with Mr. Paul Egter. So, all of us, I think, are behind this. So, there's that announcement, and let me talk a little bit about our Arts and Cultures activities in the county. Okay. So, we're going to have the Lake Oswego Historic Home Tour. This year, the tour features four historic homes ranging from the nineteen twenties to the nineteen sixties and two public sites, Lusher Farm and Belushi Pavilion at Merrillhurst University. That's Saturday, May fourteenth, eleven to four, all around Lake Oswego. Music in the Woods, Susan DeWitt Smith, Portland pianist Susan DeWitt Smith, a professor at Lewis and Clark College, performs in a solo program of gripping virtuosity and tender sentiment. Sunday, May fifteenth, two to three PM at the Holy Names Chapel at Mary's Woods in Lake Oswego. And if you would like information about any arts event, you can go to clackamasartsalliance.org. And also, I did attend the tourism meeting yesterday of our Tourism Development Council, and they've received two years of, well, 2015, two awards, actually, for their, from Travel Oregon, for the fine work that they've been doing in promoting tourism here in Clackamas County. So, we're kind of proud of that, too. So, that's the news.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Bernard.
I'll probably be short. One thing I mentioned earlier is that the chair and I attended a child abuse training, which was very challenging. We also attended the child abuse luncheon yesterday when they had speakers who had been abused and had changed their lives thanks to the support of various groups, but also some that, you know, prior to Clackamas Children's Center had to fight those battles on their own. So, I think we're doing a So, I think we're doing a really great job, but I think that the message is, is that, you know, we don't have enough, we're going to have to put more investment in programs like that in the future, including our Family Justice Center, which imagine was never, I mean, it's only been open, is it two years now?
Almost.
Almost two years, and four thousand people have gone through there. Who was helping those people before? And it's just amazing. Having this service has, I'm sure, saved lives. And Martha, I support totally you signing that document, and the important thing is, is that I think we should put it on the wall around the county to make sure that people know that it's a covenant, and we're going to work towards getting that done. The last time when I signed it, I think I was, well, I was, you were in Salem, and I was a new at the commission, and no one knew what happened to it. And it should be, a covenant is something that you should covet and have visible and work towards an end. So, I look forward to moving forward with the, you know, and supporting the covenant. And also, AOC was Monday, and there's a lot of small communities that are still battling how to take care of youth. They've got no place to put them, and these are juveniles who have gotten into trouble. They have no place to put them. So, seventeen counties have gotten together and have a facility, and I don't, there's no, I guess the question is, are other counties such as ours willing to take a little bit less to help some of these counties that have nothing, to help make sure these kids get the services they need? And that will be a debate, I'm sure that will occur down in Salem and at AOC for quite some time. Onto the dog.
The dogs.
This is McGruff. "A tiny bundle of power, ten pounds." Man, I would think that dog, I was surprised when I read the pound. "With no tail to show you how he feels, so his backside weagles in place of a wagging tail. Please give him time to get to know you. Once he has warmed up, he will be in your lap or dancing with delight. Yes, he really does dance on his hind feet. Treats are huge motivator, so he can learn more tricks with a snack as a reward. His breed is known as being loyal, spirited and alert. Please go to visit McGruff today at our Clackamas County Dog Service Center. You can be reached at 503-655-8628, or visit the web at www.clackamas, I mean, yeah, dot clackamas.us, I mean, forward slash dogs. I'll tell you that I got two dogs from the shelter, and they're amazingly different, but I really do enjoy them. And I live on a little ranch, and one of the dogs is kind of used to it yet, and I'm about to test the other one and see how it does at the ranch. But, yes, stop by the dog shelter. Dogs make great friends." And Mary has a wall full of pictures of dogs. I got to get mine up there soon. Thank you, and have a great week, and don't forget to vote.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Well, yes, the Champions for Children Luncheon yesterday actually sold out, and they sold out of tickets for their auction items. I hope it was profitable for them. It was their tenth annual, and I understand final luncheon because they're going to try to do something else for their fundraising activities. And I guess all good things must come to an end, and you need to stay fresh. This week, we had the Wilem Falls Locks State Task Force, and it's where we considered future ownership of the locks and how we would pay for it. Some very good ideas coming forth, good discussion, and hopefully by the time we end this task force in November, we will have some good ideas to present to the legislature on that. And all the board here has been supportive of that effort and trying to figure out who's going to own it and how all of that will pan out. So, that's a good thing. What was just handed to me before I came in today, the permit, a proposed site planned for the infamous Markham Inn.
Not infamous, infamous is bad.
Infamous.
Famous.
Infamous, because it burned down, now we're going to rebuild it.
Oh, really?
The what?
The Markham Inn.
The Markham Inn.
You haven't been there? The double Markham burger?
In South County Clackamas, South Clackamas County, in Markham.
Markham.
Markham. People from all around drive thirty miles to the Markham Inn for a famous, large Markham Inn hamburger. Yeah, and other things. So, it burned down several years ago. I believe the property's sold. Somebody's coming in and going to rebuild there, and that's nice because that's one of the county's RRFF five zones that they're taking advantage of, which we don't have many of. And so, that is news hot off the press, just saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Savas?
Well, we all, yesterday, were in attendance for the Children's Luncheon yesterday, and I wasn't here as a Commissioner when that Children's Center in Oregon City was open, but, you know, kudos to all the people that actually took a leadership role in getting that. I know the county contributed some resources for that. And we talked about the safe place for victims of domestic violence. You know, I think it was about a year or so ago, we realized that when some of these mothers and even fathers that were victims of domestic violence came through there, they usually had their kids in tow, and so, more attention, hopefully. And I know I talked to some of the staff here that are trying to pay attention to the needs there for those kids when we have an opportunity to interface with them. So, I'm glad to see that, be part of that creation of that and see that through. It's highly successful. Unfortunately, it's highly successful, right? You know, in a perfect world, there would be no domestic violence. Yeah, I just wanted to go back a little bit and just talk about, I mean, some of my experiences when I first came on, I remember in the Water District, no matter what it is in government, and the county has so many different aspects of services we provide, but, so there's always going to be a flare-up or some issue that people are going to have a lot of interest in, whether it's libraries suddenly, or whether it's roads, or whatever it may be. But obviously, people are going to ask questions when those things surface and they become a higher profile, and it's natural for, I think, us to receive those and honor those requests to help diffuse that situation. And I will never forget a situation on a district that I was on, I won't name it, but we were part of another group of governments, and we had a particular person that actually made a lot of very onerous public records requests. And this person had been famous, and this was not just in Clackamas County, this person actually had asked questions of agencies that were in Washington County, Monoma County, and Clackamas County. And it was not a county issue, but it just happened geographically, that it was this certain type of district provider. And this person had been famous for being very aggressive in his request. And I was Chair of the Board at the time when this person came. I had my first encounter with this person, and the media, news reporter was in the room, and this person made a pretty strong request, and we said, well, great, hopefully our staff can provide that information for you. And we left at that. So, the subsequent meeting, the monthly meeting afterwards, staff had put up a series of what I call, you know, barriers to actually providing that. And the media had jumped on that because the media had suddenly had interest in some of those documents as well. The lesson learned there, I think, and long and short of it, was that we changed the policy and we gave that person everything that he ever asked for at no cost. And it completely really diffused the entire situation. And that person is, when I saw him afterwards, it was no longer an issue. I mean, and I have found that in, at another district that I was on, when we had another controversial issue that came about, that just giving them everything they wanted actually diffused the situation, and it solved problems. And I really believe that that's really the premise behind ORS 192, public meetings, public records, you be as transparent and provide as much as possible. And, you know, this is nine hundred and, was it nine hundred and thirty million dollars is the projected budget?
Nine hundred and seventy-three million.
Nine hundred and seventy-three million dollars.
Almost a billion dollars. So, I mean, I know that we can't look at all of those areas as closely as we would like to, and we do depend on staff, and we do have good staff here. But I think when citizens have questions and there's that much money on the table that we do what we can, honor their requests. So, I've always been an advocate of that and will continue to be. So, that's what I have for today. And yes, get out to vote, and by the way, Happy Belated Mother's Day. I did want to say, we were talking about the Children's Center and all of that, we got to realize that mothers take, play a big role in that, and it's always very impactful for me on Mother's Day to realize all the great work we do on behalf of kids and victims of domestic violence. So, that's what I have for today.
This weekend, we had a great briefing from an official from Maricopa County, who have been at the forefront of managing for results for decades now. And it's enlightening and encouraging, and she encouraged us to have patience with this because it takes a little time to really realize the fruits of our labor. And so, I thought that was a very good presentation. She fielded a lot of questions as well. Tonight is a fair board. I always look forward to that because Raylene does pie, although Ms. Crup, I think, put a special request in for a strawberry shortcake. I don't know if they're going to do that or not. This next week, we have the Clackamas Global Export Summit. We have the Citizens Academy is going to kick off, and we're going to have results for lunch. Performance Clackamas is going to be discussed at that. Also, we have the Clackamas Community College Fiftieth Year Anniversary, coincides with my graduation from high school, and I'll be doing some opening remarks in as much as my alma mater, and I used to be on the Board of Directors, long time ago. Promontory Park, one of my favorite places on the Clackamas River. It's up above Estacada, had a great park, and it had a great, great fishing, Les says, absolutely. And you could rent a little, could rent a little boat there and cruise out, and they have a small fry lake, they call it, where only kids can fish in. But what a great place, and PG is finally reopening that. They had to close it because they built a, what I called affectionately, a fish trap, a huge metal contraption that floats, I don't know how. I guess it's all about displacement, right? But I'm really happy they're going to be opening that this Saturday as well. We had a briefing this last week, and, you know, I often tell people, you know, these meetings are these meetings, but the real action happens on Tuesdays. That's when we set policy pretty much all day long in our policy sessions, and I encourage you to listen in on those, or certainly you can attend. One of the things we had a briefing about was child sex trafficking. For those deniers out there, they're wrong. It exists, and of course, it follows the freeways, pretty much, and this is from Mexico all the way to Canada. And so, we must be cognizant of that, we must put our resources as necessary forward in order to combat that, and we appreciate the great work our sheriff does in partnering in that. We also had a briefing about the CREU action. Now, CREU is the group put together to really manage our parks to this extent. Barton Park used to be atrocious with alcohol use, profanity, and certainly not a family environment. This board took a courageous action when I first got here in 2013 to say, no more alcohol passing through our parks, especially onto that river. It's made a tremendous difference according to the neighbors up and down that river, according to families who now get to attend without being offended and blown out. So, good work on their part. Unfortunately, I said it before on Tuesday, this is going to be a policy-level ask for the forty thousand dollars. I mean, in a giant budget like that, and we all know there's a lot of pass-through money, so we don't get to put our hands on a lot of this money, but next year, and I fully expect that our Budget Committee, and let alone this board, finally approves that forty thousand dollars, but I think that that must be ongoing, not something that's perilous and possibly eliminated simply because some people didn't think it was that valuable, because it is valuable and necessary. We also approved a rather lengthy Grants Management Manual. And it's, you know, there needs to be some better coordination with our grant money, how it's applied for, who keeps track of it, and it doesn't necessarily, isn't necessarily relegated to a particular department. It's going to become more centralized now. We had a great presentation by our internal auditor. Wow, what an addition. A man knows his stuff, and he really digs into things, and I think it's going to be great in that really our departments are taking his advice, and there's been almost unanimous, and everybody's unanimous about the fact that he's come forward with some great ideas. It'll be cost savers, time savers, money savers. So, good for Brian, a great job on that. That seems to be it from Lake Wobegon, so ladies and gentlemen, we appreciate you showing up today and/or watching. There being no further business on this beautiful day, this meeting is adjourned.